In the hearing momentarily, thank you for joining us today.
Good morning. Welcome to the first of the MTA's fair and toll hearings. This process is going to be laid out by our community relations team. Over to you. Thank you for, thank you to everybody for being here.
Safety moment.
Oh, we always start with the safety, the safety comment. And that is about to unfold on tape. Let her rip.
Your safety is of the foremost importance to the MTA. Therefore, we ask that you listen and adhere to the following instructions. If you witness an emergency, notify emergency personnel in the room and call 911 immediately. Please follow any audible instructions provided through the public address system or visually on screens in the event of an emergency. If an alarm sounds, wait for a public address announcement and follow instructions. If told to go to another floor or to evacuate the building, leave all unessential items behind and use Stairwell A just across the main hallway or Stairwell B down the hallway past the elevators. If you have a mobility disability or cannot self evacuate, please proceed to Stairwell D or E for assistance by MTA staff or emergency personnel. An automated external defibrillator, AED, for use by trained personnel is in the main hallway just past the elevators. If you need assistance during an evacuation, please tell an MTA staff member or emergency personnel. Thank you and have a safe day.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Danny Randell from the MTA. I will be serving as this morning's hearing officer for this public hearing, the first of four hybrid public hearings to provide the public with the opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to MTA fairs affecting transportation on the subways, buses, communal railroads, stand down railway, and accessory ride. Today's public hearing will begin with a brief presentation, followed by public comments from speakers in the room and remote via Zoom. As a reminder, only those who are registered to speak will be able to give public comments. To make the public aware of these hearings, advertisements were published in 21 print media outlets, including multilingual outlets throughout the region. The MTA also provided notice of the hearings in multiple press releases, on the MTA website, on social media, on multilingual signs and digital displays in stations, buses, and trains. The MTA's fair hearing website, new.mta.info/2023-fair-hearings, describes these proposals in detail. By participating in this hybrid hearing, you're consenting to be recorded. We encourage anyone joining via Zoom or live stream to take a short survey using the QR code or link currently being displayed. This survey helps us understand the effectiveness of our outreach. The link to the survey can also be found in the Q and A section of the Zoom. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on the fair change proposals contained in the hearing notice. Members of the MTA Board of Directors, agency presidents, and senior staff are here today to hear comments from the public. MTA subject matter experts will be available to answer your questions about fair change proposals, both in the room and in the Zoom Q and A function. The Q and A function is available only if you are logged into the Zoom webinar online, and it is located on the lower portion of your Zoom window. If you are attending via Zoom online, type your question into the Q and A function. Subject matter experts may answer your question if it is deemed to pertain to the subject of this hearing. If you are attending your, if you are attending in person, you'll recognize our staff members by identifying name tags. Members of the public can also provide comments, ask questions, or make requests on the fair hearings website, new.mta.info/2023-fair-hearings. You may also send a letter to MTA Government and Community Relations regarding MTA fair hearings to 2 Broadway, 17th floor, New York, New York, 10004, or by calling the public hearing hotline at 646-252-6777. Telephone agents will be available from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. I should emphasize that all public comments, including spoken comments today and at other hearings, all correspondence, emails, and phone calls will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record regarding the proposed fair changes and provided to all the board members so that they can review them prior to final consideration of the fair change proposals. And for the record, today's date is Thursday, June 22, 2023, and the time is 10:13 AM. Now, let me briefly describe the procedure for today's hearing. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they are registered. And we opened registration for today's hearing on Friday, June 2, 2023, and registration closed at 6:00 PM this evening. All participants will be muted upon joining the Zoom webinar. When your name is called, please enable your camera and microphone by clicking on the microphone and camera icons on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Please note there will be a brief transition to allow you to access your video and microphone. We will give you 10 seconds to turn on your camera and microphone before moving on to the next speaker. In the event your name is called and you are not present, we will read your name again at the end of the hearing in the order it was initially called. When you begin your comments, please provide us your name and any affiliation you wish to announce so that we have it for the record. Speakers must keep their remarks to two minutes or less out of respect for all other speakers. The clock on the screen will indicate how much time you have remaining, and visual and auditory cues will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. If you run out of time, remember you can always submit complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. American Sign Language and card captioning are available at this hearing. The public notice for this hearing indicated that language translation services are available, but no request for those services was received by the deadline specified in the notice. To access captioning at the bottom of the screen, select CC, and you will be able to turn on or enlarge the captions based on your preference. You can also view the entire script for context if needed. Users will not need to adjust their screens to see ASL. As a reminder, this hearing is being live casted and recorded and will be available publicly on our YouTube channel and our website. Again, by participating in this hybrid hearing, you are consenting to be recorded. Thank you for listening. And now let me introduce the MTA Board of Directors and senior executive staff who are with us today. We are joined by MTA Board members Albert, Board Member Fleischer, Board Member Glucksman, Board Member Mahaltsis, Board Member Tessitore, Board Member Solomon, and Board Member Valdiva. Board Member Tessitore will be joining us remotely. From MTA leadership, we have Jono Lieber, Richard Davy, Shanifa Riera, Kevin Willens, and Camilla Royo. I will now turn it over to John McCarthy, MTA's Chief of External Relations, and Jay Patel, MTA Deputy CFO, for a brief presentation.
I think we overlooked Mr. Willens.
It's worth mentioning twice. Kevin Willens is here. Thanks, Danny. We're just going to do a brief presentation, myself and Jay Patel. There's a quick backgrounder on how we got here. First, we're going to go into some of the, where our revenue comes from, where our revenue goes, and the important role that fairs play in our operating budget. And then we're going to go into the proposals, and we will highlight some of the promotions and pilots that this fair change covers. The next slide, just a little bit of background as to how we got here. This past December, this board adopted a budget that assumed a 5.5% increase in fare revenue based on the understanding that that would be necessary to balance a budget and avert a fiscal cliff along with other revenue, new revenue sources. In earlier this year, the governor, Governor Hochul put forward a budget proposal for the state that had a balanced approach to deal with our fiscal cliff. It included new revenue. It included operating efficiencies at the MTA. It included new city contributions, and it also included a fare and toll change. But as part of that budget agreement, the governor and the state legislature did include an additional $65 million that averted the higher than predicted fare increase. That would be the 5.5% fare increase that was included in the adopted budget for the MTA in December. So we would return to the 4% increase. This is, this allows us to return to the biannual increases that started back in 2010 after then Lieutenant Governor and former MTA Chair Ravitch put forward a report that outlined the importance of having regular predictable low fare increases to keep the system stable. I'm going to turn it over to Jay Patel, who will go through quickly the, where our revenue comes from and where our, where our expenses are. Jay?
Thanks, John. So a quick overview of the sources of the MTA revenue and how it's spent. Fair box revenue represents 27% of our total revenue. That's down almost from 40%, which was pre-pandemic. This fare revenue is critical, but it only covers a portion of our operating costs. Operating costs, which include employee salaries, health benefits, these account for about 60% of our total operating budget, and then our nonlabor costs such as fuel, traction, professional contracts, and maintenance contracts. And then there's a portion of our operating budget that covers transportation revenue bonds, which support the system's much-needed capital investments and improvement. These costs increase over time, and modest recurring fare increases help offset portions of these costs.
Thanks, Jay. The next slide that, that we're presenting illustrates what we were just discussing about the importance of having regular lower fare increases. As you can see in the slide, when we avoid a fare increase, we are then hit with a larger, not predictable fare increase, as you saw in the 2003 year on this slide after a 10-year gap. The theory is, and this is something that other transit properties are adopting, is that more frequent, smaller toll adjustments avert radical fare increases, as you saw in 2003, and it allows our customers to have a predictable fare increase that tracks inflation. Of course, we're also doing everything we can to maintain the affordability of our transit system. Transit is, by its very nature, affordable. It makes New York City and the region more affordable. It allows for people to avoid car ownership or multiple car ownership, and we want to keep it that way. So most importantly, it's keeping our operating expenses in check. I think it's very clear in both the MTA's adopted budget and the governor's and the state's adopted budget that that is a critical piece of our path forward. And we've already done work in that area with reductions of $100 million in this fiscal year and growing that to $400 million in the out years and sustaining that, those savings. And we will continue to look at, at ways to, to, to not only maintain that, but look at other opportunities. Another issue that has come up frequently when it comes to affordability is ensuring that our fares and tolls are paid and that evasion is, it stops being a growing problem. This past year, we put forward, the chair put together a panel of experts, a broad panel across civic leadership in different areas. They reported out last month, and it was well received. The important findings are related to design and how we can improve the fare gates and, and, and toll structures, stream lighting, ticket collection on the railroads, new messaging on benefits to fare payment, why we need this, why it's important for our operations, and then how we can work with the NYPD and other agencies to improve enforcement in that area. Also incredibly important on affordability is the work we've done with the City of New York on fare fares. This is half-priced discounted fares for low-income residents in New York. We're, there's a lot of discussions currently about how this can grow. There, that was also discussed in that panel report on fare evasion. So we're, you know, watching that closely. But again, this is an important part of keeping the system affordable and targeted affordability for our customers. We're also, as Jay will go through when she looks at some of the specifics on our rollout of new fare options, we're looking more and more at addition, additional ways to improve fare capping and other instruments. Jay will take us through how the staff worked with the board in coming up with our new fares.
Thanks, John. So a basic approach to our 2023 fare increase. In December, the MTA started, began working with several board members, many of which are seated here today. Thank you. And we focused on three main priorities. Increasing the fare to help balance the 2023 budget and future years. Allocating increases with an eye towards equity. And then looking at customer behavior to responsibly prioritize our frequent customers. And so how did we do that? Let me walk you through the, our permanent fare increase, which is today's topic for the fair hearing. The 4% increase applies across our different fare media products. This slide shows you sort of how we approached each one. Quick highlights of this is the proposal is to increase the base fare by 15%. Our seven-day MetroCard by $1, as well as the Omni fare capping pilot that we have by $1 as well, and the 30-day by $5. On the railroads, we're looking at increasing our tickets by 4.5% on average for the monthly and weekly tickets. Oh, I'm sorry. Not 15%, 15 cents. Thank you for the correction, Kevin. Base fare going from, proposal is to go from 275 to 290. Clarification. So when discussing permanent fares, it gives us an opportunity to talk about pilots and promotions as well. And these are pilots and promotions that we include and look, review to see customer behaviors to talk about in the future. So as we look at our fares and the pilots and promotions, we look to build on the legacy of offering fair products that take advantage of our existing capacity and delivering equity across the system. With that goal in mind, we're introducing some new pilots. We're offering customers a seven-day rolling fare cap on Omni. It's moving away from the static Monday through Sunday fare capping, but allows us to give our customers flexibility and start their work week at different times of the day, different days of the week rather than fixed Monday through Friday schedules. We're also expanding the city ticket to weekday peak for $7 while maintaining our off-peak city ticket for $5. We are launching a new far Rockaway ticket, and we continue to maintain the deep discounts on our monthly tickets. Those, the monthly tickets are already discounted pre-pandemic, 40%. This continues the 40% to 50%, which was a promotion that we did in 2022. These help provide rail access via affordable fare products in communities that do not enjoy the same access that our subway customers do. Turning it over to John to close out this presentation.
Yeah, so again, we are hearing from speakers in person and on Zoom. Just to, to thank the board members and senior staff for being here and just to advise how this works. We, this is, there's a lot of access opportunities here if you want to speak. We'll be doing a series of these today, tomorrow, again on Monday. We, two minutes to speak. Please register if you haven't already, and there's opportunities to register. We, we really, really, this is very important. Hearing for you is very important. The board members always come back to us, whether it's at our board meetings or at hearings, and express the importance of hearing for you. They are here today, and there will be a series of board members throughout the, the remainder of the hearings. Also, just reminder to reiterate what Danny mentioned earlier. We will have government community relations staff available, both online and in the room to help with other questions, so please don't hesitate. Danny, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, John and Jay. We will now move to the public comment portion of today's public hearing. I will call our first public speaker of the night, of the day, the day, apologies. When your name is called, if you are participating via Zoom, there will be a brief transition to allow you to turn on your camera and unmute yourself through your microphone. Our first speaker today over Zoom is Assembly Member Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, followed by Barbara Blasucci.
Good morning. Good morning. Can folks hear me? All right. I'm a New York State Assembly Member Jessica Gonzalez-Rojas, and I represent parts of Jackson Heights, Corona, East Dalemburgh, Astoria, and Woodside in the 34th Assembly District in Queens. The working families in my district, which are chronically underserved by the MTA, particularly in the north part of my district, rely on public transportation to get by in their daily lives. My constituents and so many hardworking, low-income, and immigrant New Yorkers cannot and should not bear the burden of a fare increase of $2.90. I, along with many of my colleagues in Albany, advocated throughout the legislative session for funding and legislation that would have fully funded the MTA, improved service frequency, and prevented fare hikes. I introduced a bill that would improve MTA's finances by directing revenue from the internet marketplace sales tax and remitting it directly into the agency's budget. And while that didn't pass, I was very pleased that we did pass a budget that included $35 million to improve subway service frequency and funded a pilot of five free bus routes, one for each borough. But I'm now urging the board to figure out other ways to improve its fiscal soundness without passing the responsibility to transit riders who cannot afford another fare increase. New Yorkers, including my constituents, are already struggling with everyday costs. This choice to further burden them with this fare hike is unnecessary decision by our executive, and it doesn't need to be so. We could have increased revenue and avoided this by taxing the rich, as many of my colleagues and I proposed we should. So I adamantly oppose this proposed fare hike. In a modern and abundant city and state like New York, no one should have to dig even deeper into their empty pockets to get to work, drop off their children, get to the hospital, or get to school themselves. Thank you all for your work, and thank you for hearing me out here.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Barbara Blasucci over Zoom, followed by Joseph Morales in the room.
My name is Barbara Blasucci.
I'm a native New Yorker who has utilized the MTA for over 40 years, from traveling via train and express bus to college and to work, and via local bus from neighborhood to neighborhood. It is fair to state that the improvements to these services within the past 20 years have been marginal at best. To summarize, train delays consist of signal problems almost every evening rush on the Pelham Bay Number Six Express and Local. The Pelham Bay Six is overcrowded during every rush hour at the 51st Street Station platform. It is so overcrowded that I am forced to take the BX-M8 Pelham Bay Express to avoid any issues on the platforms. The BMX, the BMX-8 is rarely on time at 51st and Madison. It is always the last express bus to arrive at the stop. The 5:00 PM commute to Jarvis and Bruckner is usually two hours at a minimum. I have gotten supervisor approval to leave work at 3:30, and I still arrive in the Bronx at 5:30 PM every night. The local BX-8 is packed in the mornings from 8:00 to 9:00 AM and from 12:00 noon onwards. Passengers are forced to stand in doorways anywhere they can squeeze onto the bus they can. Buses are dirty. Drivers speed past stops. The Bronx Bus Network redesign has eliminated crucial stops for seniors and students, yet the on-time performance of this bus is exactly the same. It still takes the same amount of time to travel from right over here on Zulet and Crosby to Williams Bridge and Neal. There is no improvement in commute time as a result of the bus network redesign. Stations are crumbling. Pelham Bay Station has been renovated more times than I can count, and yet it's still falling apart. What is another fare increase? What is it doing for us? Everything, buses and trains are dirty and overcrowded. We are being forced to take on this responsibility for fare increase. It is not fair to New Yorkers. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Joseph Morales, followed by Michael Howard.
All right, good morning, everyone. My name is Joseph Morales. I'm a junior in high school. I'm gonna start with talking about the $7 peak city ticket. Unfortunately, while this is progress, it's not going to work for Bronxites and low-income individuals who already cannot afford the $5 city ticket or even a traditional subway fare. Therefore, I believe that for all low-income individuals and Bronxites, city tickets, both off-peak and on-peak, should be reduced to 275, as well as all combo tickets to really promote this way of transport. I also would like to propose the introduction of a student city ticket to allow students within New York City to basically have as close to the benefits of a student MetroCard as possible with the railroads. This would help a lot of students. One of my best friends, he's the head of construction of Bronx Science, the Bronx High School of Science, since robotics team. He gets on at the Queens Village Station and then takes the Ford train from Grand Central Madison to his school. A lot more students would do things like that for specialized high schools and certain private schools if they had the option. I also used the MetroNorth from my school near Marble Hill to get to my internship. I also, when we mentioned in the presentation more enforcement of fares on the railroads, I'd like to mention whenever I take the train, I use an e-ticket all the time. Most passengers that use paper tickets, what they'll do is they'll put their paper tickets on the chair, and the conductor will come by and collect them. Most of the time, I have to remind the conductor to check my e-ticket because they don't ask. So it's really important that we not only identify how to more efficiently enforce fares, we identify small shades of gray like that where we could do better to really make sure that people pay the fare as designated. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Michael Howard, followed by Andy Pollak over Zoom.
Morning. My name is Michael Howard. I prefer Mike, spelled M-I-K-E. I just want to say, I've been a reduced fare customer for 20 years, since 2003. And I remember I used to, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember I used to pay 75 cents each way in the beginning. What I want to say, okay, fare hiking is a major sham. You feel me? And I've just got to mention this, that the reason I've been a reduced fare customer for the last 20 years, because I have a mild intellectual disability. And plus, I also live in southeast Queens, which is far Rockaway. But I'm just glad what I heard about Far Rockaway is getting a freedom ticket on the Long Island Railroad, because I'm like, I live like about 15 minutes away by bus. By walking distance, it would have took me 30 to 35 minutes from my house. I also live around, in Far Rockaway, I live around Long Island, like Atlantic Beach, Long Beach, and Five Towns. So anyway, y'all have a blessed day.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Andy Pollak, followed by the remote speaker identified as NP.
Good morning. My name is Andy Pollak, and I am from Passengers United. Well, here we are after two years. I said in January of 2021 to the board that we should hold off on these fare hikes until 2023. Well, here we are. It's 2023. We know everything is going up in cost, that's a given these days. And we know that everything is on the table. First things first, please go with toll option B. What is toll option B, you may be wondering? Toll option B would keep the EZ Pass toll on the bridges and tunnels to below $7, where it currently is to only $6.96, but would only raise the mail tolls to $11, to a price that I can't specify at this moment, but it would be more than the EZ Pass. So don't burden the EZ Pass users. That's what I'm asking. And also, if you're going to go through with these fare hikes, please do not eliminate the Atlantic ticket. We need the Atlantic ticket. Thousands of people in Queens rely on this program to get to and from Atlantic Terminal to various destinations throughout the borough of Queens every day, every week, and each and every month. It can vary. And that's what led to the Empire Ticket, the way it is for $5, to go to Grand Central Madison and Penn Station from Queens. So please do not eliminate the Atlantic ticket. And please think about what you're thinking of cutting before you even think about raising the fare to $2.90 and even think about raising our railroad fares on Metro North and the Long Island Railroad. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be the remote participant identified as NP, who has also requested ASL assistance, followed by State Senator Robert Jackson in person. We will return to NP later on in this hearing. Our next speaker will be Senator Robert Jackson.
Good morning, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I'm Robert Jackson, the state senator representing the 31st Senatorial District comprising of northern Manhattan, Washington Heights, Inwood, Marble Hill. And now one-third of my district is in the northwest Bronx. So my people that I represent ride the eight trains, the number-one train, and then the number-one and the four train in the Bronx. And so I'm writing to express my strong opposition on their behalf, to the majority of them, to the proposed change in MTA fares and tolls in 2023, specifically the 4% increase in fare revenues and the 5.5% increase in toll revenue. The state legislature specifically added $65 million in the budget to partially offset the increases. And as such a fare hike at the expense of the people that I represent, majority of them don't earn a whole lot of money, should be off the table. While fares and toll revenues is vital for the MTA operations, and I understand that implementing these proposed changes would have a significant negative impact on the commuters that I represent. The increase of 15 cents from 275 to 290 to the base fare. However, the individuals who heavily rely on the public transportation, such as low-income earners, students, senior citizens, these increases will result in substantial financial burden over time. These individuals often lack alternative transportation options and would face additional hardships and strain on their budget. Furthermore, the reduction in services and amenities is another concerning aspect of the proposed changes. With the increase in the fares, commuters have a reasonable expectation of improved services. And bottom line is that they cannot afford it. I say to you that the whole system, when they moved the token booth at 181st Street and Fort Washington Avenue, it was terrible there. People are unsafe. Moving the people off the station cleaners is really, really putting the safety and security of the people that I represent at jeopardy. I ask you to reconsider your decisions as far as the fare increases. Thank you. Trying to stay within the two minutes like everybody else.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Rosalind Clay Carter, followed by Pedro Valdez Rivera.
Good morning. I am a rider of the New Haven train line, and when I get to the city, I ride buses and subway. And I'm also speaking this morning on behalf of the Metro North Railroad Commuter Council, of which I am a member. It is important to recognize that if it weren't for the governor and the state legislature, we would be having a very different conversation this morning. Because of their bold, yet overdue action, the MTA is looking at a more certain economic future for the coming years. We thank our elected officials for recognizing the needs of the people by financially supporting transit as the essential service that it is. Who likes a fare hike? Yet we recognize that supporting the system with smaller planned increases is critical to keeping it in good financial health and running safer, reliable service for the citizens. Even with a fare increase, transit will continue to be more affordable and typically more time-efficient than driving, and also cheaper than several other cities that I've visited. Transit is the key to a more sustainable region and healthier environment. Improvements funded with congestion pricing money will make for a smoother ride, and adding more creative and flexible fare offerings will further encourage drivers to get out of cars and use transit. The Metro North Commuter Railroad Council will continue to advocate for more, including ensuring the senior and disabled fares apply at all times of the day. We strongly support capping the cost of monthly ticket fares for commuters living in the farthest city areas from New York City at $500. We support the 4.5% increase on weekly and monthly tickets that would still be a lower cost than pre-pandemic. Cost of 10%. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Pedro Valdez Rivera, followed by Courtney Harris over Zoom.
My name is Pedro Valdez Rivera. I have been a Rise Alliance member since June 2013. Me and my family have been living in a best-style nature development since January 2016. In the past, me and my family were financially struggling to pay monthly bills because of the pandemic. Also, in the present, it is really hard for me and my family to buy weekly necessities because of the rising cost of inflation. Furthermore, in the future, there is far less money left over for me and my family to purchase the full fare per trip because of a possible recession daily. In addition, I oppose the proposed fare hikes for buses and subways that could take a fare before Labor Day because that could put a strain on me and my family's budget. That's why fare fares are central. However, because me and my family's annual household income is not 100% above the federal poverty line, we are not eligible. Also, that is why me, my family, and millions of New Yorkers are demanding Mayor Adams and his administration to spend fare fares from 100% above the federal poverty line to 200% above the poverty line in the New York City's budget, which could benefit almost 2 million New Yorkers. Furthermore, I deeply advise the MTA and the Blue River Panel to advise Mayor Adams by spending fare fares to the NYC budget. In addition, I strongly encourage them to both advertise and educate millions of New Yorkers all over their subway and bus systems about the benefits of fare fares. Therefore, they are using it to enter the subways and buses at half the cost of a full fare, while not evading the fare and adding additional subway and bus ration numbers toward the MTA upgrade cost. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Courtney Harris over Zoom, followed by Thomas Loy over Zoom. Yes.
Complaint about, hello?
Hi, sorry, Courtney.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm just going to begin speaking. I'm here to speak about EZ Pass, which has proven to be a scam that has hurt many New Yorkers. I'm a native New Yorker, born and raised for the last 32 years of my life. In 2022, I was coming from New Jersey back into New York City, where I was pulled over, my license plates removed, and thrown in the back of a police car. I was told it was because my registration had been canceled, as well as my license, because EZ Pass reported me as evading tolls, which is impossible because I had not used EZ Pass in years, and I've been paying toll by mail from the tolls being taken, from the tolls taking pictures of my license plate and sending me letters in the mail. I reached out to EZ Pass, and they told me that I was charged fees for not using EZ Pass, for not using EZ Pass, not for not paying my toll, which I was paying, but for not using EZ Pass. And I had over $3,000 of fees for not using EZ Pass. I asked for a better explanation, and they said because I did not have any money on my EZ Pass, EZ Pass reported to the MTA that I was evading tolls, which was false, and that I had to pay them fees for, again, not using EZ Pass and not having money on EZ Pass. I ask that EZ Pass is held accountable for their scam shark loan-like behaviors for attacking people and stealing money from innocent New Yorkers. Again, when I looked on my EZ Pass account, it said that I owed $0. And that is because, again, I had not used EZ Pass in years. And EZ Pass reported me as evading tolls, which I was not doing from paying. I paid all of my tolls, and I had to pay that money. So I ask that they're held accountable and that they're either, A, removed from the toll system, or that, again, they're held accountable for their misbehavior. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks.
Danny, somebody will be in touch with that speaker on the chat function. Have her hold on.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Thomas Loy over Zoom, followed by Daniel Carpen. That was Thomas Loy. Please make sure that once your screen updates, your camera and microphone are enabled, We will return to Thomas Loy. I'm at a later point in the hearing. Now we will proceed to our next speaker, Daniel Carpen, followed by Sergio. followed by Sergio Cruz.
My name is Daniel Karpen, K-A-R-P-E-N. I reside at 3 Harbor Hill Drive, Huntington, New York. I'm a licensed professional legendre. And I understand there is no Long Island Railroad president right now, so I've decided to apply for the position of Long Island Railroad president. I've ridden the trains for over 50 years, and I can recall in the early '70s, two-by-two seating on coaches from 1916 that had windows that actually opened. So here's what I would do. One, print real paper timetables. People ask for them. Two, treat passengers as passengers, not customers. Three, put waiting seating near the bottom of the escalators at Grand Central Madison. Four, lengthen the platforms at Kew Gardens, Forest Hills, and Cold Spring Harbor. Five, determine if additional rolling stock is needed for the Montauk trains. Six, allow bicycles on rush hour Long Island Railroad trains. Seven, put full spectrum lighting on all Long Island Railroad trains so passengers do not fall asleep and miss their station stop. That's happened to me. Eight, put solar photovoltaic paddles on the roofs of Long Island Railroad stations. Nine, put electromagnetic shielding around the fluorescent ballast on Long Island Railroad trains. Ten, adjust schedules and length of trains to meet demand. Eleven, have periodic meetings with passengers. Twelve, this is something creative. Make the second-to-last car a singles car. Provide a free monthly pass good for one month for each bride and groom who meet while traveling on the Long Island Railroad. By the way, my ticket from Siossa to Grand Central Station.
Please conclude your remarks.
Paper ticket was not picked up by the conductor this morning.
Thank you for your remarks. This hearing is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on MTA's proposed fare changes. Speakers' comments will be recorded and provided to the MTA board and leadership for their review. Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Sergio Cruz, followed by Charlton D'Souza over Zoom.
Hello, my name is Sergio Cruz, and I'm Bronx-born and raised. And I go to CCNY in Harlem. So you can imagine I'm gonna need a MetroCard to be able to get to school. But here's the problem with that. It's so expensive just to afford a MetroCard. Even though I'm in the fare fares, it's still like about $60, and it's gonna go even higher. And I know you could just say, just get a job. I got three of them, so. Even with three of them, I gotta decide in between rent, other bills, necessities, and all that. So you can imagine, you guys are New Yorkers. You should understand, like, about 75% of our paycheck goes to our rent. So we shouldn't have to decide between whether we want to be able to go to school or to our job, between that or to just starve in general. And something that may seem like just a couple of cents to you guys, it's actually a life-or-death situation for many others. I'm not the only one who has to deal with this. Like, I have so many people behind me that also need to use that money in order to pay other fees. And there are many people in dangerous situations, like, for example, dangerous working conditions or dangerous family situations that they can't just, like, move or go somewhere else because that's unfortunately the only way they can afford to survive. And we may be blinded by the fact that these people are considered adults by the time they're 18, but 18 is barely an adult. They're still, these people are still children. And we shouldn't be deciding, we shouldn't be showing children that we are going against them. We should be showing that we are here to help them. And we need to show them that we are deserving of the American dream to go to college and succeed in life. Otherwise, we're not deserving of that title. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Charlton D'Souza over Zoom, followed by Jackson Malkus in person.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me? My name is Charlton D'Souza.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, I am, my name is Charlton D'Souza. I'm the president of Passengers United. And yet again, the MTA is raising fares. Not only that, but you guys are gonna raise the price of the Atlantic ticket to $7 because city ticket during peak hours will now be $7 for a shuttle service where people have to take 45-minute trips to Brooklyn from Queens. This is outrageous. This is ridiculous. And then with all the subway crime going on, with all the delays and the network communication issues, you guys wanna raise the fares at a time when the rents have just been raised, bills are going up, people have to pay student loans now, you know, because of the decision by the federal government. This is gonna be devastating to so many poor and struggling New Yorkers who are attending college, they're graduating high school. They don't have the money to pay right now for this. But to get rid of the $60 Atlantic Weekly, no, y'all should be creating a Freedom Ticket, City Ticket Weekly Pass that people can use at Atlantic Terminal, I mean, at Atlantic Terminal, but also Grand Central and New York Penn Station. That is the way you do it. That is fair equity, and it should really be $50, guys. Come on, $60, make it $50. And, you know, the off-peak city ticket should be 375. The peak city ticket should be $5. And the base fare for New York City subways and buses should be 275. Because, trust me, if people are struggling to pay 275 now, right? How do you think they're gonna pay $2.90? Do you really think people are gonna have the change to be able to do that? And what y'all are not telling people is the MetroCard surcharge is $1. So it's actually $35 for 70 unlimited. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jackson Malkus, followed by Malija Wahid.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the proposed fare hikes. My name is Jackson Malkus, and I work at City College in Harlem. So I've worked with hundreds of students at City College and across the CUNY system, and almost all of these students are using the MTA every day to get to and from campus. And I've heard from pretty much the majority of these students how much of a challenge it is for them to be able to afford the MTA, to use transportation to get to school, right? Because of inflation, students are already dealing with crazy costs for food, rent, other living expenses, on top of what they're paying for their education. In fact, the Center for an Urban Future found that during a survey on college costs, affording a MetroCard was the single biggest financial barrier students cited to completing their education. That's the number-one barrier for them completing their education. So we know that CUNY graduates are some of the most important contributors to New York's economy. CUNY graduates stay in the city, and they give back to it. So from my perspective, it's obvious that the city should be supporting CUNY students however they can and working to remove any barriers that students could face on the way to getting their degree. So I'm asking that the MTA board rejects the fare hike proposals and looks to expand the fare fares program to 200% of the federal poverty level. I'm requesting that the MTA does what it can so that we do not further prevent low-income residents of the city from accessing essential public transportation. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Malija Wahid, followed by Jonathan Chastain over Zoom.
Hello, everyone. My name is Malija Wahid, and I'm a student at City College Harlem. I thank the MTA for the opportunity to testify today on the proposed fare hikes. So as a City College student, I have to commute from Brooklyn and back, and I have to take the train at very odd hours, sometimes at 7:00 AM in the morning, sometimes at 9:00 or 10:00 PM at night. So when you're trying to catch a train at that time, you're either too drowsy or too tired from the day to actually function properly, and refilling the MetroCard at that time is a very draining experience. I hope a lot of people can relate to that. And I think it's arguably worse for me as an international student because I can't get a job, and a big portion of my budget just goes into getting the MetroCard and just getting to school. So sometimes it becomes a choice between a meal and a ride to school. And it is a very difficult experience. And sometimes I don't have the money. I don't have the cash to get to school. So I am either late for class, or I have to miss a class entirely. And that puts a lot of strain on my education. And on one notable occasion, I was stuck in the train system at 10:00 PM at night because though I barely managed to scrounge up the money for one ride, I couldn't pay for the card because the machine would not accept cash. It would only take card. So it was very difficult, and I was almost on the verge of tears. I got lucky in that situation because someone else helped me out, but it's always in the back of my mind that there are many unlucky people, students my age or younger, who get stuck without a ride at home at unfortunate times. So it's already a struggle to afford a MetroCard on a daily basis and not to be late to class just because of the different issues MTA faces regularly. So I believe students don't need another barrier to getting their education. We don't need another fare hike. We need affordable transportation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Jonathan Chastain over Zoom. There will be a brief transition as you are enabled to turn on your camera and microphone. Please make sure that once your screen updates, your camera and microphone are enabled, and then begin your remarks.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for allowing our community time to express our concerns regarding these proposed fare hikes. In January of 2022, the MTA received a substantial $6 billion in federal funding, fulfilling the $14 billion in pandemic funding previously granted. I thought this funding would prevent fare hikes. Considering the significant financial support, I oppose the proposed fare increase. Instead, I strongly advocate for fare reduction or a cap on future fare increases. However, if this fare hike is unavoidable, I urge the MTA to take additional measures to improve quality of service. These measures should emphasize consumer satisfaction metrics, transparency, and a commitment to a cleaner and safer buses, subways, stations, and stop. By prioritizing these aspects, the MTA can enhance the overall commuting experience for its riders. I live in northern Manhattan. I'm a regular customer on the MTA, and I would like to see quality of service improved, but I do not want to sacrifice affordability for many, many people who utilize the MTA every day. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Those conclude the folks who are in our Zoom room, but we do have speakers in the room left. If you believe you have registered for today's hearing but have not yet heard your name called, please either speak to a member of the staff in the room or indicate so in the Zoom Q&amp;A function. Our next speakers will be Constance LaSalle, followed by Iva Webster.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the MTA regarding the fare increases. I'm a senior, and I've ridden the public, I've ridden the public buses and subways for the past 63 years, and it's been quite convenient. However, with the current request for the increase, I think it is out of proportion at this time since there's such an economic hardship for most of the citizens. However, I would like to express that you would consider the economic hardship of the persons at this time and consider a delayed increase at this time. I appreciate your listening to my requests. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Iva Webster, followed by Clea Hazizaj.
So Iva went first because we're together. We're really speaking together. You called my name before you called Iva.
Please identify yourself just one more time.
I am Constance LaSalle, from Brooklyn, and this is Iva Webster, from Brooklyn. Iva is from Crown Heights. I'm from Park Slope. We have the help here from the City Council person from Harlem, or former, or state senator. At any rate, we are waiting for two more registered people from Bed-Stuy and the Bronx because we are, we are the Brooklyn folks that wanna be in Brooklyn. I just returned from Buffalo to Brooklyn. One of the speakers who is coming down that's from the Bronx wants to be in Brooklyn. And we all worked hard to keep the Franklin Avenue shuttle running when you guys tried to close it in 1977. And we're still working on transit issues. And right now, we don't wanna see any increases in the fare. In fact, we want the Union Street bus put back, and we want the bus across the Brooklyn Bridge put back. It cost me $40 to get here on a taxi. I have a walker. If you had the Brooklyn Bridge bus, I could come here and for a few dollars, and I could go to City Hall. So please do not be cutting the services and restore those services that connect Park Slope and Crown Heights and the cultural centers of Brooklyn. And I would tell you, I've got this shirt on because my ancestors were immigrants. They may have come here a long time ago as Huguenots and pilgrims, but they were immigrants. And right now, at the Bedford Avenue Armory, I will cry while I'm talking to you because people who can hardly speak English that look like they're 16 are on one side of the armory and African-Americans on the other side of the armory.
Please conclude your remarks.
And they can't afford to ride. I tried.
Thank you for your remarks. Thank you for your remarks. Our, but let me just say, please kiss the shuttle, please. Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Clea Hazizaj, followed by Gina Russell.
Hi, my name is Clea Hazizai, and I'm a Bronxite and a student at City College. For you all, the fare hikes may seem as if it's just 15 cents, but for the rest of us, it's much more than 15 cents. Right now, as a CUNY student, I already struggle to pay the fares with the majority of my paycheck already going towards fares every month. I have friends right now who are struggling to pay their college tuition and other friends who have actually had to briefly stop school for a while because they couldn't pay the fares. So for us, that 15 cents can determine our future. It can determine whether or not we will continue college and where we will be 10 years down the line from now. That is not right, and that is unacceptable. And also, right now, every city budget in this city is being cut. All social support systems are being cut. People can barely afford to pay rents here in New York City. Yet now, we are asking them to pay more money to get on the MTA every day to do essential things like going to work or going to school, or for some people, even buying groceries because there are a lot of places in this city that are food deserts. The MTA is wanting to increase ridership. Well, how is that supposed to happen if people can't even afford to pay the fare? That is not right, and that is unacceptable. And I am here to urge the MTA to, instead of increasing the fares, to actually increase the fare fares program to 200% of the federal poverty line so people can actually be able to ride the MTA without having to resort to things like hopping the turnstiles and literally having cops waiting at the staircase for anyone. and literally having cops waiting at the staircase for anyone who hops the turnstiles. Why I've seen them catch sixteen-year-old kids who probably didn't have any cash left in their money, whose phones are probably dead and had no other way to get home.
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Patrick Johnson over Zoom. There will be a brief transition, Patrick, as you are enabled to turn on your camera and microphone. Please make sure that once your screen updates, your camera and microphone are enabled and then begin your remarks.
Hey, good morning. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, you know, this, this, uh, the, the speaker just said about CUNY students. Don't they get free MetroCards and students get free MetroCards? I don't know how anybody, anybody came up with this fifteen cents number. That means it's only thirty cents more for a round trip trip just taking the bu- regular bus or the subway. Why not just make it three dollars? Like, you gotta be kidding me. People who are gonna pay the two seventy-five are gonna pay the three dollars. You, you, this is crazy. Fifteen cents? And you're gonna do congestion pricing where you're gonna be charging twenty-three dollars a day to drivers? I live on Staten Island. The express bus is like, what, seven dollars? So that means it's fourteen dollars for a round trip on the express bus. If I drive, it's only three dollars and change round trip each way in the batter, in the, uh, Verazano Bridge. So that's like six dollars and change for me to drive my car into Manhattan. Okay? Yo, this whole thing makes no sense. No sense. Fifteen cents. Make it three dollars. The people who are gonna pay are gonna pay. The people who are not gonna pay, put them in jail. Okay? You had the guy the all day. He jumped in the subway style. He slashed three women in the subway. All right, this is crazy. Like, what, I don't know what you people are thinking when you have these meetings, like, fifty, this is what the number you came up with, fifteen cents, three nickels? You came up with three nickels? Yeah, the whole thing is an embarrassment. The MTA, the governor's office, the mayor's office. I mean, you, th- th- this whole thing is crazy. Fifteen cents. I can go walk around and pick it up nickels. Make the subway fare three dollars. Make the regular bus three dollars. Fifteen cents. Make it easy for the students to get the free MetroCards. The, the girl just from the Bronx. Make it easy for her. Make it easy for the students and the college kids.
Please conclude your remarks. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gina Russell, followed by Sumaya Tasnim.
Good morning. My name is Gina Russell and I am from East Flatbush, Brooklyn. I have just completed my first year at City College and I've been navigating the subway system on my own for nine years now. In the last year, my eyes have been opened to the weight of cost of transportation in this city. And with the fare increase and my ineligible for fare fares as it stands, public transportation becomes a luxury. It will strain my family and many others as it becomes burdensome having to sacrifice necessities for other necessities. For example, getting an opportunity to make money and play my part in the economy is now threatened by whether or not I have to, I have the money to get there. I very well may have to pick up fifteen cents off of the ground. Without the expansion of fare fares, the dystopian idea of choosing between having a meal with all food groups and getting to work and school for the next week becomes a reality and you can prevent this. I encourage you to support the expansion of fare fares by two hundred percent over the poverty line as anything less will result, will only result in more isolation for opportunities for low and medium-income students and citizens. I am studying language and community change at City College and I hope to frequent rooms like this. And I would like to be able to afford to get there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Sumaya Tasnim, followed by Sulya Ayong.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Sumaya Tasnim and I'm a student of City College of New York. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify today on MTA's proposed fare hike. I'm from Bangladesh and I'm an international student. My tuition fees and also living costs come from my country. Just like me, there are thousands of students who come to New York for their higher education. We come from different backgrounds for better opportunities in New York. New York is most diverse city in the world because of us. As immigrants, make it diverse by sharing our own culture to your, your country, to your city. We bring money from our home country and contribute to your economy. We pay full tuition fees and in return, we get CUNY budget cuts and the fare hike. It's literally no-brainer that New York is already so expensive to live in. And this fare hike is only going to add up to the struggles of the students, not, it's not gonna lessen our concern or struggle in any way. This is not only about fifteen cents. It's about a student's future. It's about, a student's future is a state's future and a country's future. Students dropping out from college for fare hikes or tuition fee should not even be a topic of a conversation, let alone coming here in front of, of the, in front of the board and talking about it. So I strongly oppose the fare hike and implore the board to reject the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks. Our last registered speaker, um, is Sulya Ayong in person. Quick reminder that after this, we will take a brief five-minute pause to allow folks who believe they registered for today and who have not yet had their name called to speak to a member of the staff in the room or indicate so in the Zoom Q and A function. We will return to that speaker momentarily. Our next speaker will be Andrew Rain.
Please allow me to summarize, uh, test, uh, comment that was submitted that's a little less brief than I will make this. We support the proposed fare and toll increase since it's essential for the MTA's fiscal health and appropriate for riders and drivers to pay a reasonable portion of the cost of services. Importantly, this increase is a critical component to the state's rescue plan. So not adopting it would start to unwind a plan that is essential for the MTA's future. But know that that plan, while generous, will not solve the MTA's long-run budget problems. We look at, assuming that the TWU pattern goes system-wide, um, we project operating expenses will grow three point three percent a year. The smart fiscal policy of biennial increases should continue. However, the math is perfectly clear. Increasing fare and toll revenue roughly two percent a year, when expenses are increasing three point three percent a year, will only serve to widen the MTA's budget gap. So we recommend after adopting this, that the MTA reexamine the four percent biennial yield policy and consider whether a higher rate might be necessary for the MTA's long-run fiscal stability. For our neighbors experiencing economic hardship, CBC enthusiastically supports fare fares. A well-marketed and, and highly taken-up program is critical to the MTA and New York's affordability ecosystem. But New York's future will not be prosperous if the only solutions to the MTA's challenges are to raise revenues. New Yorkers should not pay one penny more than is required to provide high-quality, efficient services. While there are parts of this plan to increase efficiency being undertaken by the MTA management, we believe that labor and management should continue to increase productivity by expanding one-person train operation, increasing worker availability, modifying shift parameters and job duties, among other actions. This is not about making employees work harder. It's about labor and management joining forces to work smarter. Um, the state has asked drivers, riders, taxpayers, businesses, all to pay more. By doing more on productivity with management and labor, all stakeholders will participate in helping ensure the MTA is strong and supports New Yorkers' economy and quality of life. Thank you very much for your work and allowing me to talk today.
Thank you for your remarks. Our next speaker will be Sulya Ayong, followed by a five-minute break or pause to allow folks who believe they are registered but have not had their name called to speak to MTA staff in the room. Okay. Uh, we will now take a five-minute pause to allow folks who believe they registered for today.
Danny, just real quick, um, again, anybody in the room who needs more information on fare fares, there are representatives in the back who can speak with you. Also, um, we heard from some CUNY students. There's representatives here from GCR, Government and Community Relations who can speak to them. There is a, there is a relationship between CUNY and the MTA where they do purchase cards in bulk for their students. So, um, please feel free to reach out to our representatives in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We will now take a five-minute break. The time is eleven twenty-one.
Can we resume? Thanks.
So that concludes our public comments session. There are no additional speakers. Thank you all for joining us this afternoon, this morning. As I mentioned, the time is 11:34, and this concludes our meeting for today. Please visit the MTA's fair hearing website, new.mta.info/ We will be back for our second hybrid hearing tonight at 6:00 PM, and you can still register to attend that event until 6:00 PM. As a final reminder, in addition to the hybrid public hearings, there are also several other ways that you can provide comments. You may also send a letter to MTA Government and Community Relations regarding the MTA fair hearings, and address it to 2 Broadway, 17th Floor, New York, New York, 10004, or call the Public Hearings hotline at 646-252-6777. Telephone agents are available from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM daily. Thank you.
Thank you to the board members who attended, for attending, and thank you to the speakers who participated. We'll look forward to hearing from other New Yorkers as well in the several hearings yet to come. Thank you.